The time is 6:00 PM. It is August 31st, 2020. We are about to start our work session this evening. Ms. Lisa Garcia, can you roll call, please?
Mayor Tara Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor John Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Wall.
Air.
Councilmember Kristen Larson.
She had an emergency that arose and contacted me. She will not be with us this evening.
Councilmember Michelle Cordes.
Here.
Councilmember Judy Hughes.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. We are going to go ahead and open up our work session on the CARES Act funding. I just want to start off with some background and discussion regarding our work session this evening. So due to the economic downturn of the COVID-19 pandemic, the town council has challenged the town staff to propose a program whereby funds can be invigorated into the local economy. The proposal before council is a result of the suggestions that have been received from our business communities and also those gathered by the Chamber of Commerce. And this has been framed by discussions that staff has had with council in recent past, including a work session that was held on August 10th, 2020. The Returning Stronger Grants are the resulting plans that we'll be discussing tonight. The grants reimburse businesses for their assistance in protecting health during the COVID-19 pandemic. Eligible businesses, nonprofits, and food banks will be able to receive reimbursements for the public health measures that they implemented. This program would provide community funding of up to $500,000 for personal protective equipment and physical equipment costs that enhance the safety of visitors and staff of their Florence-based businesses, including home-based businesses or nonprofits. Brick-and-mortar businesses would also be eligible for reimbursement for rent, mortgage, water, wastewater, sewer, and electrical utility costs in the months of March, April, and May as these utilities further promoted the health and safety of the general public and workforce. Each business would be eligible for up to $10,000 reimbursement between the differing types of public health expenses, the PPE, food bank reimbursements, rent, and utilities. Funding would be on a first-come, first-served basis until the maximum amount of $500,000 is reached. In Florence, we had 63 small businesses that have already received payroll protection program forgivable loans up to $150,000. And one Florence business received a loan of between $153,000. These businesses range from nonprofit organizations to LLCs and independent contractors to self-employed businesses. Staff does not have the data on how many have also applied for or received the Economic Injury Disaster Loans or other SBA grants or loans. Applicants would be required to sign an affidavit certifying that they have not received any other federal funds to cover the costs for which they're requesting to be reimbursed. And businesses would have until October 31st, 2020 to apply to the town for the reimbursement of these expenses. An application will be developed, and the businesses will submit the receipts and complete a signed application, including the affidavit. And the application would be reviewed by an internal audit panel selected by the town manager. Now, this panel would simply exist to ensure that the applications are complete and that they meet the criteria. As applications are approved, the team would forward the recommendations to town council at the next available regular meeting. So, the financial impact of this. Staff is recommending that the Florence Return Stronger Grant provides up to $500,000 to local small businesses reimbursing successful recipients for costs incident to improving public health. Now, at this time, a vote is not going to be taken at our work session this evening. It will appear on the September 8th agenda. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Benjamin Bitter as he has a presentation for us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Obviously, as we've gone through the last few months, we've tried to come up with a program and a plan that would provide money to our local businesses in a way that is legal, but also in a way that is easy for those businesses to apply for and in a way that would provide a maximum amount of money going out into our local economy. And so, as the mayor has shared, we've developed a program and talked with our budget committee over the past week. Obviously, have met with each of you, have had multiple work sessions up to this point. And so, really wanted to provide an ultimate proposal that we think can serve as a foundation for your all discussion. And so, we've got that for you tonight, as the mayor mentioned. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. And again, this is what we're calling the Returning Stronger Grant Program. Again, as part of all of our discussion in the town, a lot of it is based upon the plan that we created as staff and council approved earlier in May. That's the Florence Return Stronger Plan. And that is a basis for us as we are moving forward and getting to a stage where we can start to reopen facilities and our economy continues to reopen into new phases as the pandemic hopefully continues to slow. So we wanted to base this grant program off of that same language and call it the Returning Stronger Grant Program. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on all of these slides. Obviously, the main purpose of tonight is for you all to have discussion as to what point you want to make. And I'm happy to fill in the gaps if there are any questions about those type of things. But don't want to belabor the points too much because we've obviously had a lot of discussion on this. And so, we did receive some funding from the Arizona CARES Fund, from the governor. Those were to cover public safety expenses. And they have paid for already public safety expenses in last fiscal year and are going to cover public safety expenses in this fiscal year as well. So, we continue to move forward with that. But however, despite those public safety costs being covered by the Arizona CARES Fund and in light of the economic situation that we found ourselves in, we certainly heard from council, we heard from our community that there should be some sort of a program that could be provided to provide aid to our local economy, reinvigorate that economy, get the money churning throughout our local businesses, and hopefully sustain them during this difficult time that obviously they have had. So, one of the things that we did, both at the last meeting and since, is reach out to the chamber, to businesses. And the chamber was kind enough to kind of gather some of the thoughts of our businesses and put them together. So we put those on a slide. And although the text is small, we wanted to have it on a slide so you could kind of see it all at the same time and so that we didn't give any one comment any more prominence than another. But as you go through these comments, and again, I'm not going to read them all for the sake of time, you'll see things that are suggested that we can do and things that I think that we've incorporated into the recommended plan and into the grant program that we're recommending tonight. But then, there's also things that are probably better left for the future. And that could be something, you know, like an additional fire station at Arizona Farm and Felix Road. And that's highly specific. And, you know, I don't know who provided that exact comment. But, I mean, obviously, as we're going on and we look at our operations, those are things that we look at on an annual basis as we're doing budgeting or providing for a capital improvement program where we look into the future, five or 10 years, and say, what are our services going to look like? So some of those type of things are maybe longer-term discussions. And with the Returning Stronger Grant Program, we're really focused on today and how we can get money out of the economy, how we can get these businesses strengthened today as opposed to something that is, while certainly valid and is something that should be discussed, that may be something that's more in the future. And so, you know, I didn't specifically call out some of those, but there are others like providing opportunities for the sheriff's posse, the American Legion, or using funds to bring buildings up to code. Certainly, we want all of our buildings up to code, but we also are limited, as we mentioned in our last discussion, by the Arizona Gift Clause. And we can't give money to buildings to bring them up to code as those are owned by private entities. And so, while we'd love to be able to do that and while we continue to work with the legislature to provide us more authority to get some of those non-code compliant buildings, particularly in our downtown area, up to code, there are certainly means whereby we can do that, but probably not through the Returning Stronger Grant Program. And so, some great ideas are on here. Even having a temporary Small Business Development Center office in Florence, I think that's a great thing for us to talk to with the county and with Central Arizona College and with some of our partners that even if we could get an SBDC office here once a week or the staff on board that if our business community is looking for that, we can certainly try to assist and bring that on board. But then, there's also comments that are more immediate. And those talk about providing cotton masks or hand sanitizer and those type of things. And so, as we go throughout, I would say that the input from our businesses, from the chamber, even letters we've received today have been very, very well received and important for us as we've developed a recommendation. And the recommendation is that we stay as broad as possible. We want to get as much money as possible into our local economy to provide the stability for the businesses that they need. And so, you'll see in the coming discussions how we try to do that. We also, as we talked in our last work session, heard a lot of discussion about other Penal County communities and what their programs looked like and what they were doing. And so, we put together, I guess you could call it a spreadsheet, and looked at each of these different communities and the county's program itself to kind of compare and contrast. And the first way for us to do that was to basically look at the amounts of allocations, the amount of money that they received from the state, and then also how much they planned or did distribute to the community at large. And so, you know, as you look at these type of programs, and the mayor mentioned already, our program, our recommendation would be for about $500,000, similar to Queen Creek, similar to Maricopa, that they received about double of the allocation that we received, but the amount that they're providing to the community is effectively the same. And so, we want to really try to be leaders and want to provide...
Ben froze for a moment, so I'm going to pick up until he unfreezes.
I did, again.
You froze after we want to try to be leaders because you were giving the comparison regarding the other communities, how they received essentially double of what we received, yet they're giving out the same amount. So, was there anything else that was added?
Thanks, Mayor, and I apologize. I don't know what happens with the internet sometimes. Lots of Zoom calls going on, I guess. But, yeah, we want to be leaders and provide as much money into the community, but we also want to be as flexible as possible within the legal constraints that we have. And so, I hope and I think that we've satisfied that goal. But I hope that requirements that we have for the program will be satisfactory for our business community in terms of the ease of application. But then also, as it relates to us internally, we need to make sure that we are going to meet the audit guidelines for both our own internal audit as well as a single audit that may come on behalf of the federal government. And so, I think that we've successfully managed both of those aspects. But if you look, just one thing I would point out. On the Penal County side, across the county, the various programs that were developed, the average amount that is going to businesses is 14%. Our percentage is almost 16%, so we're higher than average. But we're certainly reaching, trying to become leaders within the county in terms of how much we're providing. And the second page is similar, except this talks more about the various different criteria that the communities used for their plans. And so, you know, you can spend probably an hour just looking at this sheet and trying to dissect it. But what we really wanted to do is provide you all with the information and provide the public with the information if they wanted to access this. And so, on our online agenda packet and certainly in the packets that you all received as council as well, we provided each of these programs, the applications, the criteria, frequently asked questions for each of these programs so that you could see that what we are recommending is not just in line with some of these programs, but we hope expands upon some of the programs and successes from our neighboring communities. And so, again, you could drill into that for as much as you want and happy to answer any questions you have on that, too. But in the interest of time, we'll kind of keep moving it forward here and let you guys get to your discussion. But again, our recommendation is really that we're looking to reimburse expenses. We're looking for receipts. And if you can have a receipt that shows that you spent money as it relates to these various different programs, then we hope to be able to reimburse you for that. Again, our goal is if you've assisted in enhancing public health and you've assisted with our duties, and we can legally reimburse you for that under our legal guidelines that we have. And so, a couple of key things as well. You know, the mayor mentioned that part of the program is designed that people would have to sign an affidavit. And I'm just going to skip ahead a couple pages and we'll come back to this. But the affidavit is really important for us because part of the guidelines that we have from the federal government as well from the state is that if others have received funding through these federal programs, then they're not eligible to use the money that we've received to reimburse for those same expenses. And so, if they've received, for example, the Payroll Protection Program or Economic Injury Disaster Loan, we won't be able to cover those same expenses. Now, if they've got rent that they haven't applied for another program like the Arizona Small Business Rent and Mortgage Relief Program, then we'll still be able to reimburse for that expense if they meet the other criteria. But we've got to have a signed affidavit because that is one of the requirements for the use of the funds under both the state and federal program. And so, you'll see right here, taken from our direct notes, expenses that have been or will be reimbursed under any federal program, such as the reimbursement by the federal government pursuant to the CARES Act of contributions by states are ineligible expenditures. So, just wanted to point that out kind of before we get into the nitty-gritty of the actual program. Now, getting back into the actual recommendation, we tried to make this as broad as possible. And after talking to the community and listening to the community, after talking to the council and the budget committee and having discussions individually with you all, we certainly heard that the program initially proposed was not expansive enough and would not make the intended positive difference in the community that we had hoped. And so, we looked back and found ways to expand that as best we could. And these are the, I guess, finer points of that. Brick-and-mortar businesses are eligible for up to $10,000 per business for rent and utility reimbursement, and also eligible for PPE or physical modification reimbursements. And so, if they've done anything, we'll get into the next page of some of those physical modifications that they've made, but such as curbside pickup windows or if they've enhanced parking in some way, or they've provided PPE or put stickers on the ground, you know, any of those type of things, all eligible. Brick-and-mortar businesses are special in that they're also eligible for the rent and utility reimbursement. And so, that is something key for the brick-and-mortar businesses. We hope each and every one of them will be eligible, again, up to that $10,000 limit. Florence-based nonprofits is the next segment. And we just lumped in home-based businesses as well for this one. Again, we feel that home-based businesses are certainly kind of the seed within our community that will hopefully one day grow into the flower, blooming into a full shop on Main Street. And so, we didn't want to leave out those home-based businesses and certainly heard that. However, we can't simply provide rent and mortgage assistance for individuals that are operating out of their home because it just becomes more complex. And so, we've tried to provide as much flexibility as possible there by allowing PPE reimbursement or physical modification reimbursements, again, as we discuss on the next page. But anything that they've done to assist in public health in terms of gloves or physical barriers, if they have a delivery service that they're providing and have had to take special modifications and have receipts to back up those things and can justify that, we can reimburse for that. So, that's Florence-based nonprofits and home-based businesses. The next category that we didn't have in our last presentation, but have added now, are food banks. And food banks are hugely important to our community. We had another food bank in town this week where we did a drive and very important for the lifeblood of our community to provide assistance to those that are in need. And so, as we looked for ways that we could provide some liquid cash to those food banks for providing a service to our community, we went back and looked at the federal guidelines, and they specifically said that we could reimburse for food banks and for the expenses of food banks. And so, as long as we can get receipts from those food banks, we can do a reimbursement up to $10,000 for each of those. And so, that would be our recommendation on that front. And then, all-inclusive, that would cap that total grant allocation, again, as the mayor mentioned, at $500,000, again, being in line with Casa Grande, Maricopa, and Queen Creek, that all received more than Florence. And so, again, trying to take that leadership role within the county. The one caveat, again, that we would say is we hope that our businesses get their applications in quickly. This is on a first-come, first-served basis. We want to be able to get the money back out quickly. And our process would simply be to receive the application internally, have it reviewed by an audit team for completeness, make sure that everything is included and that the receipts justify the request. And then, those will be placed on the agenda for the very next council meeting that's available. And so, that would be the process and hopefully be quick. Again, just as a matter of, I guess, further clarity, brick-and-mortar businesses are the only ones eligible to apply for utility reimbursement. Those utilities are water, wastewater, and electrical. And again, those are the three utilities specifically called out in state statute as necessary for public health. And so, that's why we have selected those three. And then, for a further clarification, it's just, there's not a $10,000 reimbursement for rent and utility and another 10 for protective equipment or PPE. It's a $10,000 total per business as the recommendation. And so, just getting real quickly into a few of the details in case people have questions, we've tried to expand this list as much as we can in terms of things that would be eligible for reimbursement. So again, if there's Plexiglas physical barriers, if you've created some sort of new policy or have a new parking area or a new curbside pickup, all of those things could be eligible for reimbursement. Again, we're really looking for receipts and some sort of a narrative to go with those receipts to explain why you're requesting reimbursement. Beyond that, if it falls within the categories of protecting public health, it's, you know, the hand sanitizer stations or masks or gloves, those things are quick and easy no-brainers. Other things might require a little bit more of a definition or a description as to why you're requesting that reimbursement. But hopefully, we can capture as much as possible there within those criteria. And again, I think we've hashed the application approval process to death already, but we thought of a few ways of handling the internal review and thought about adding community members or members of the council. And ultimately, the recommendation is for an audit panel. And the reason we went in that direction is because this isn't judging based off of how much merit you have. This isn't judging, you know, it's not a scholarship. This is simply, if you've got the receipts, you've qualified. And so, we want to be able to turn it over as quickly as possible, not have to burden another business or someone coming into the panel that would have to work around a schedule. We want to be able to get through these as quickly as possible and turn them over to the council for your approving vote. And so, that was ultimately why we went with the audit panel. I know we had some discussion about that at our last work session, so wanted to make sure we at least discuss that. Again, we hit the affidavit, so I'm not going to hit those two. So ultimately, we wanted to present this to you all for your discussion as a group. We obviously, as I mentioned, had the discussion with the budget committee. And I'm sure the mayor or someone on the committee could have a discussion about how that discussion went. But if all goes well tonight and you can come to a consensus, we'd be really prepared and ready to rock and roll for a recommendation on the September 8th town council meeting. So we'd put that together in the agenda packet and get it out to you by the end of the week. And so, with that, happy to answer any questions and fill in the gaps.
All right, well, thank you for your presentation. That was very much on point with what we've discussed. I do want to open it up to questions from our council first. I have a few jotted down, but I just want to start, perhaps, councilmember Will, councilmember Hughes, do either of you... I thought I saw a nod, that's why I called on you guys first. My visual is smaller than it should be. Councilmember Hughes, go ahead.
Me?
Yes.
Um, I would like to, Ben, if there is good participation, I'd like to see us up the $500,000. I think that I don't want to really turn anyone away within the timeframe. And so, I don't know how everybody else feels about that. But I think, yes, you know, Queen Creek, they get half from Penal County or from Maricopa County and then Penal County. So, and I understand and I'm thankful that you gave us all the different communities. But I think this is our chance to shine for our businesses. You know, I think that we can take this time and say, bring everything. We don't want to turn anybody away. And I love that you're adding the brick, the home-based businesses because I do think that they don't, you know, especially in this day and age, they're really becoming very vital to the communities that they serve. And eventually, they will be brick-and-mortar or could be a pop-up business or whatever. But I would like, the number I thought was if we could, you know, to cap it maybe at a million. I don't know that we will if we get that participation. But I'd also like to, if people need help trying to brainstorm what they can get, is there going to be staff participation of helping days and times that people can come into the library or wherever or call and ask somebody to come out?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Walter, councilmember Hughes. I think we've got all sorts of things at our disposal, and we can do a lot of those type of programs. Addressing your first point in terms of the amount, I think that we could certainly also, as we go along and we're making recommendations meeting by meeting, you know, if we get to, let's say, the October 1st meeting or whatever that first meeting in October is, as we're putting these on the consent agenda, we could say, you know, we got 16 requests this week and the total amount that we have requested or that has been spent to this point is $300,000 and to keep you up to date as meetings go along. And then, if you choose to make an action at that point, we could certainly also look at raising a cap at that point as well. Again, just an idea, but we could do that. And then, to your second point, we most certainly will have staff available for assistance. But again, our hope is that the application is very simple, very straightforward. And as the businesses are applying for the money, if we have an issue as an audit panel or the audit panel has an issue, we expect that there will be communication between that audit panel and the business owner, not just saying you were rejected and you only get X amount of dollars, but kind of going back and forth and having that dialogue and saying, here is what we're... and saying, here is what we would recommend or here's what we need in order to, to finish this, this application. And so I would hope that the businesses can apply as quickly and completely as possible. But certainly after they apply, they will have assistance and then we'll do our best to, to provide that assistance throughout the process even before they apply.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Just go like this, if you'd like to speak and then I'll call on you. Council member Cortez.
Ben, when is the application process going to start?
So again, if, if we can get on the council agenda on September 8th, assuming that our, our package here is, is hitting at least most of the right notes and we don't have to make drastic wholesale changes, we'll have that ready to go on the meeting for the 8th. If approved at the meeting on the 8th, we'd be ready to take applications on the 9th. So our application will actually be included in the packet. We don't have it today because we didn't want to create an application before things were final, but we'll have that application included in the packet so you all can see that draft application and the council can see the draft app or the, the community can see the draft application prior to Monday's discussion. And then they'd be able to start submitting applications as early as Tuesday.
So just to clarify, to make sure everybody that's out there listening, nobody's been allowed to file an application beforehand because there wasn't one available. No staff nor council should have or has promised any business any money. So there's no, no money sitting in reserve for somewhere being earmarked for any business. Everyone will get the application on the same day and have the same amount of opportunity to apply for this money since it's a first come, first served basis.
That's great.
Perfect, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I mentioned this in the budget review, the HVAC. We have several of our nonprofit organizations that are in dire need of HVAC or upgrades and improvements for their air filtration systems, but we can't touch that with $10,000. We're talking about $20,000, $30,000. And they apply and would we consider that if, if money were available?
Thanks, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Under the current guidelines, under the, the recommendation that we have, that wouldn't be a program that, that we would recommend. I think that it would create a lot of difficulties for, for our staff in determining, you know, whether someone is going for a Lexus HVAC system or whether they're going for, you know, the bare bones and we just don't have the expertise. And so not only would, would that be a difficulty, but even deciding who gets it and who doesn't. Because again, if we're, if we're purchasing large HVAC systems for more than one or two or three entities, then it'll eat through the funds pretty quickly. And so we're trying to provide a basis whereby they can get some funding and how will they use that funding after they receive it? And obviously they've already spent money on, on the PPE that, that maybe they hadn't budgeted for, but after they receive it from us, after proving that they've received or after proving that they've spent it on the PPE or the physical modifications, they can choose to use that how they see fit. And so we certainly want to, to provide an infusion into the, into the businesses, into the nonprofits, but we had to create a limitation somewhere so that we could get it spread out to more groups.
Well, it's, it's difficult for the nonprofits to even do this if, if they have to provide receipts and they have to go spend $20,000 that they don't have. So unless they know they're going to be reimbursed though, I guess we're saying we can't support the nonprofits then, from their standpoint. Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
You're a little bit breaking up, Mr. Billingsley.
Oh boy, I'm sorry. I, I'm in the town hall, I don't know why I can't get decent coverage. Can you hear me at all?
It sounds like a robot.
Ben, please explain the gift clause and, and why we can't invest money in buildings that add to the property value?
Yeah, so Brent was specifically mentioning the Arizona gift clause and I know that we've discussed that in our previous work session, but there's a clause of the, the state constitution that prohibits us from providing money or, I guess, direct funds to businesses and people, nonprofits without receiving equal value in return. And so similar to how I mentioned earlier, when, when we received the request to enhance the code status of certain facilities in our downtown area and how that would be difficult for us, it'd be difficult for us to purchase an HVAC system because again, that would be a, a public investment in a private entity, whether it's a nonprofit or whether it's a business. And so I think that's where, where Brent was going with the, the comment on the Arizona gift clause.
Mayor, can I say something real fast?
Yeah, sorry, I was reading something. Go ahead, council member.
Though I don't think it's that we're saying we're not supporting nonprofits because we most definitely are. We specifically have them in there. We just can't support them, you know, making large purchases because then we wouldn't be able to support as many businesses if we're, if we're giving, you know, $20,000, $30,000 to somebody to put in an HVAC system. That's three businesses that we can't help that need, you know, that have expenses that are outside, that are part of COVID versus, you know, I personally look at the HVAC as not necessarily a COVID issue. I look at that as an issue they've had for probably at least a year or more. They've needed an HVAC system. And so, you know, just like with, with some of our department requests, things that you've been wanting or needing for a while don't qualify just because COVID's here. It's got to be budgeted. And so something like that, them as a nonprofit, they have to do their fundraising and, and do some budgeting and, you know, cut, cut some pennies somewhere to help save for that type of, that type of expense. So it's not that we're not supporting them, it's just we can't support that specific item, in my opinion.
And council member Will, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I, thank you. I, I appreciate hearing from the other council members and I also appreciate having received the input from the chamber businesses and the recent emails that we just received prior to the meeting. As I see it, a lot of the requests are divided into two categories. One is specific to support individual businesses by reimbursing them for expenses they've incurred due to the coronavirus. And the other suggestions are based on ways to improve the economic health of the entire town's businesses. And I'm very supportive of both efforts. I think as far as the Arizona CARES Act funding is concerned, I think we should focus specifically on supporting the individual businesses at this point in time. I would support and hope we are working on some type of a program for marketing all of the businesses within the town through an effort, perhaps through Local First Arizona or any other type of, of support programs that we can come up with for marketing that would bring more people into the downtown area. I think the proposal as it's been redrafted is, is pretty reasonable. It, it probably doesn't meet everyone's needs or wants, but I think it's a great compromise and, and does present some leadership in terms of comparing with other towns and what they're doing. I, I'm supportive of the proposal as it's been presented.
Thank you. I had a few additions. One was just a question, if there was a business, say Ben, that received, let's say $2,000 from other funding through CARES and we're offering up to $10,000, but this business, say, spent $5,000 or would have had $5,000 in covered expenses, would they be able to put in an affidavit that stated, I received X amount of dollars, however, since you're offering up to $10,000, I would like to apply for the difference from what I spent and what I received?
Yeah, Mayor, great question. And the short answer is yes. What we, what we can do is, is, and that's the glory of the, the affidavit and it'll be the importance of the descriptions and the receipts that, that the businesses supply. Now, if applied for the rent and mortgage relief from the Arizona Small Business or from, through, through Local First Arizona, they'd have to explain that to us, but that wouldn't exclude them from, for example, receiving money for PPE or receiving money for the physical changes that they've made to their facility or even it wouldn't preclude them from receiving utility assistance. And so again, we've tried to remain as, as broad as possible so that, you know, even if businesses have gotten assistance elsewhere, that doesn't necessarily preclude them from receiving any, any assistance from, from the town through our Returning Stronger grants. We just want to be able to ensure that every business has an opportunity to receive some funds. And, you know, we've heard that, we've all heard the horror stories of, of applying for PPP loans and, you know, the, even on the national stage, it became news that, oh, if you have a big bank, you're, you're the ones that, that got your loans processed. And if you have a small bank, you're just out of luck. And so we certainly want to provide an, an opportunity to access to the funds to all of our businesses as much as possible. And so we need that affidavit, not just for the practical reason of us being required to under our, our federal and state guidelines, but also to provide a, and a measure of fairness to all of our, our businesses in town. And then Mayor, if I may just kind of hit on, on the point that council member Wall mentioned, for marketing, we certainly do have capacity for marketing, both within our existing budget and future budgets. You all were, were wise in, in putting an economic development director position into the budget and as we are actively out recruiting for that position, they'll certainly be focused on, on marketing our downtown area, our town as, as a whole and, and talking about the, the opportunities that, that exist within the town of Florence. And then we also have funding associated with that. We have the wayfinding signs that were put in the budget this year. And so I, I, I think that those are all great things. Another thing that just happened over the last eight days was that the town and the Chamber of Commerce teamed up and, and the chamber applied for a grant from the Arizona Office of Tourism or is a $50,000 grant which would require $25,000 in matching funds. But that would be for specifically marketing and advertising and promoting our, our local businesses. And so while that's a competitive grant, we continue to find and seek for ways that can help our downtown businesses, perhaps now more than ever.
You know, we're very much in sync because I was going to also touch base on those key points, especially receiving the letters that we received prior to the meeting this evening, knowing that we had already budgeted for the economic development position. We are primed, we are ready and nothing has really changed that. Yes, COVID has hit, but we still have a lot of growth and opportunity on our horizon and we will come back stronger. We're putting these programs in place. We have the wayfinding signs. We even discussed potentially separating some of that out in regards to the branding and what we could do with that and driving in that tourism factor. So there is a lot of potential. And I saw Vice Mayor's hand go up in the mid, in the middle of the thought. So go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, I just want to say two things. One, I support council member Hughes' suggestion of raising the, you know, the limit up to a million dollars. And maybe we can have a floating limit, wait and see what the applications are because the applications may come in and we get $600,000 or $700,000 or we only get 200,000. Yeah, don't know. So I hate to see us capping at, at $500,000. The other thing I wanted to ask is, these letters that we got today, most of them are asking for things that are not covered by CARES. So is somebody at town staff going to respond to all of these letters?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we certainly will. And I think that's part of our discussion here tonight as well is, is to serve as the initial primer to, to kind of future discussions. But even if the opportunity doesn't exist with the Returning Stronger grants, I think the message is clear that we are committed to our business community. We want to help them succeed, want to help them thrive as best we can. And so if we can assist, and, and you all have been a great, great leaders in, in thinking of that in, in foresight because you've put some of those funds already into the budget. And so as, as we go throughout the budget year, we're going to, to do what we can to adjust to the new normal and adjust to the reality of, of a post-COVID world. And if we can, can leverage some of the dollars that are already budgeted to do some of those extra things that were requested in the letters that we received over the last few weeks, then we most certainly would make that recommendation to council.
Yeah, I appreciate people putting in their recommendation. I will make sure that we give them a positive answer. Yes, thank you.
Council member Will?
I just wanted to add, when, when we met individually with members of town staff, a couple of the things that I had suggested that I, I didn't see in the recent, in this proposal, I just wanted to mention that I had felt that it was important that we not consider increasing any rents in our town-owned properties as they were scheduled towards the end of this year. I think it's much too early to even consider the fact that we would increase rent for any of our tenants until such time as our economy is, is more healthy. I also had hoped that we could consider covering rents for end mortgage payments if appropriate for any of our businesses for more than just the three months when businesses were required to be closed because it certainly took more than three months after they opened to immediately see improvements in their economic health. So I had suggested that we possibly consider including up to six months of offsetting rent or mortgage payments to offset what are obviously short incomes for our tenants and for other businesses throughout the town. So just wanted to make sure those comments were included today.
Council member Cortez?
I think you got to scroll through the list of everybody. So the rent increase is actually supposed to be on our October agenda. So that should be covered in October because when, when we talked about it before, we said we would review it in October. So that should already be on our October agenda. Lisa, if it's not, we'll need to make sure that it is, I would think. And then I, along with councilwoman Wall, I had asked for it to be more like six months because we are six months into it. If you think, you know, this basically was March, so we're right about six months. So I had also requested that we have a longer coverage period because for some of our businesses, although we may not think their rent is high in comparison to others, six months to them is a long time to go with either no business open or to be impacted, you know, like councilwoman Wall said, they might have only been closed for three months, but we're three months past and they're still not recovering. And so I would think that six months, in my opinion, I agree with that 100%.
I support that as well. We can add in the up to six months if we have a majority going in that direction.
I support that.
All right. Trying to go through my notes. Everything has either been covered by council or myself or by staff. So if there is no other member of council that has any questions or comments or from staff, okay, this would conclude our work session on this agenda item this evening.
Ooh, Mayor, sorry, I just thought of something not, because I thought you were going to go somewhere else with that, so that's why I didn't say anything. At our last session, we did ask Roger Beatty, who get with businesses and talk to them and stuff, is there any way we could unmute Roger and just kind of let him share with us what the business owners had said to him?
I believe that was already in the presentation, Ben? Was that part of the comments from the chamber?
Yeah, Mayor, council member Cortez, we included Roger's comments within the presentation, so the comments he had collected, and then also forwarded the letter we received this morning as well. We're happy to receive any comments and adjust as necessary, but we did try to include those as best we could to, I guess, make the process a little more efficient.
Okay, I just know that's the same comments that were given to us last week, so I was just trying to make sure in between then and now, he didn't have anything else that he wanted to add.
Yeah, and Mayor, council member Cortez, the only additional thing, I guess, there were other comments very much in line with those that were put in the slideshow. So for example, bringing buildings up to code, but the only one of substantive difference was already mentioned, and that was the marketing program. And so again, staff is certainly committed, and you all have already committed through your budget allocations to participate in that amount. We've also signed on with the grant to the Arizona Office of Tourism, and so we certainly think that that's a valuable and important project, may not necessarily need to be funded through the Returning Stronger Grant Program, but something that we can handle on the staff side throughout the year.
Okay, and just one other comment. I know that we received several emails to us today that came from people, and I would just like to make a personal request that if you know a meeting like this is coming up, if you could give us a 24-hour email, like send it to us the day before or something, because when we get them the day of, you know, I work, not that that's, you know, an excuse, but sometimes I don't get to get to my emails till halfway through the day or the end of the day on the day of council meetings, because I've done all my homework over the weekend and everything. So if you know we're coming to a council meeting, work session, whatever, if you could get those things to us sooner, then we can include them in presentations, or we can at least try to address them without not having real time to follow up or to ask questions of someone, because some of them, you know, we probably needed to ask a couple of questions, and time may have gotten away from us. So I just want to ask people that in the future, if you're going to submit something to us, if you could give us at least 24 hours before the meeting, so that way we have plenty of time to look at it and get with staff, and maybe even ask that person some questions about their statement or whatever they've sent to us. For me, I would greatly appreciate that.
I agree, that's helpful as well. All right, so this item will be coming before us our next meeting on September 8th. And if there's no further questions or comments, we are going to move forward with an adjournment.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.